I pledge allegiance to the flag of our and the United States of America, with the broad and broad and just one nation, united and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At all notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the overall meeting. I assume the public clause 1975, chapters 2, 3, 1, this agenda is completed to the extent known in the sense of the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers posted on the first floor of Golden Board in the city. All have filed in the city court's office and posted on the city Trenton website. Formal action will be taken for all. Excuse me, Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katner.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Brisbane.
Present.
Myself, Randy Garcia, Mr. Court President. In for Mr. Wes Bridges is Mr. Scott McHale, Assistant Attorney, Assistant City Attorney, excuse me, and Director Jeanne Robinson, Council. Thank you. On your ball, Madam President.
Let's proceed.
Certainly, Madam President, if you wish, I will say the invocation.
Please, sir.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city in these deliberations and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Madam President, at this time, I believe we have some presentations and recognitions.
Yes, sir.
For at least one, and I will leave that to you to go ahead and recognize that.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katner, to the other floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So today, the City Council City of Trenton Resolution honoring the Latino Merchants Association. Whereas the Latino Merchants Association of New Jersey was founded in 2007 as an idea from our first Latino councilman, Manny Segura, it was founded to help small business owners succeed in the City of Trenton and surrounding townships. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association became a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) in 2018. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association saw a need in the community and started to sponsor different supportive programs. And whereas, one of the Latino merchants' major accomplishments was sponsoring the Police Explorer program for several years. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association received a grant from the U.S. Census of Mercer County to educate the people in our community about the census and to encourage the public to fill out the census, particularly the Latino community, and during the pandemic. And whereas, the Latino merchants, during the pandemic, distributed thousands of food baskets to families in need. Together with the West Windsor Rotary Club, they gave out 3,000 hot food plates and 3,000 masks throughout the city. Whereas, the Latino Merchants Association has partnered with Luz Esperanza and Vida de la Vida Foundation to provide food and clothing to families in need. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association partnered with the local community activists to supply winter coats and clothes to those in need in 2021. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association has participated and co-sponsored several community cleanup projects. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association celebrated three kings for the community for five years, providing a 20-foot tree to Unity Square Park each year with the help of the City of Trenton. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association organized the First Latino Festival at Golden Wire Building in June of 2018, celebrating, highlighting, and supporting all Latino ethnicities. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association actively partners with Rutgers Global Health Organization and training businesses owners to help them succeed and actively works with Rutgers Trenton Health Team from 2020 to present to vaccinated residents during the height of the COVID pandemic and to organize a health clinic for families in need of health screenings. And whereas, the City of Trenton partnered with the Latino Merchants Association for 19 Take It to the Streets events. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association partnered with Curie Orsia and her organization, Chelena de la Montes, to collaborate with the Little Chef Cancer Awareness Events. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association has partnered with Clara's Heart for multiple events, including but not limited to dinner and a movie, giving out 300 certificates for families in need each year. And whereas, the organization is a part of or partners with several activities and community events in the City of Trenton, the county, and state with multiple organizations and individuals, and has consistently illustrated equality to all individuals regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, affiliation, et cetera. And whereas, the Latino Merchants Association has proven to not only be a staple in the community, but as an asset to the community with its great contributions and ample time volunteered. Now therefore, being resolved, that the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Trenton, State of New Jersey hereby recognize the Latino Merchants Association.
Before they speak, does any members of council have anything to say?
Madam President.
Madam President.
Thank you.
So to the Latino merchants, thank you for all the work that you have done throughout the years. We are no stranger to each other. We have worked together on many occasions before an election was ever even thought of or come to pass. You have certainly proven yourself throughout the community, showing love to everyone within the community. You put the "we" right when we say "we us together" is "we" is "us" is "unity". That is representative of each and every one of you. And so, from me to you, I personally say thank you for being who you are. Thank you for all the work that you have done. Thank you for loving on the City of Trenton and the people that are in it. God bless you.
Just want to congratulate you, the Latino Merchants Association, Manny, Tony, everybody, for the work that you do in the city for everyone, no matter who they are, where they came from, what they want to do with their life. The work that you do to help people who just come here, people who have been here, maybe struggling, on and above, and helping build a thriving business community in Trenton is something that can't be repaid back to, but I know that's not what this is about. This is about giving in Trenton. So, thank you very much for everything that you should be doing, all your members, and God bless.
Congratulations. I appreciate everything. You guys are advocates. You guys are a community servant to all of us in the City of Trenton and the Latino community. But everyone, so thank you so much for all that you do.
Early start. You guys helping out during COVID, community cleanups, feeding people, the list goes on and on and on. So, thank all, everybody from the Latino Merchants. You've stepped up when the youth needed help, the cities needed help. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. You guys always step up. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you. I want to just say congratulations and just recognizing the work that you do for the community as a whole. But the Latino community is the second most populated ethnic group in the City of Trenton, potentially on track to becoming the majority population of the City of Trenton. And without the Latino merchants, you know, I would think that the services that the Latino community receives would be as efficient as it is because of you. You guys go hard for your businesses and individuals to make sure that representation is at the table, making sure that your services and needs are being met in many facets for your businesses and for individual members of your organization. So, I want to say congratulations again as well.
So, I wanted to just say to all of you, Manny, you know, we have a bond friendship. It's been a while that we've known each other, and I'm getting to learn. Many of you that are in the organization, and I appreciate you. I especially appreciate the work that you do with Clara's Heart as the assistant, executive assistant to Mr. Brian Boykley over there, who's part of it once in his life. It is a pleasure to serve with you. And you guys are trailblazers in the community, and you're doing things to make sure that people have a comfort zone for our Latino community. The census is a big part of getting things done and having them done right here in our community, accountability. And the fact that you took that on to make sure that our people in the Latino community realize that the faces that look like them or the ones that were out there advocating for them is commendable. So, I appreciate that. And thank you for showing up in numbers, not just today, but every time the Latino merchants are around. You guys show up and you're in mass numbers. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do.
I'm going to try not to be emotional. I read your resolution. Corinne, could you please come up and join the Latino Merchants? Thanks. Thank you. You are a part of the Latino Merchants Association. Do we want to ask Brian to come up? Brian, please come up and join. It wasn't me this time, Brian. It was Council President. It was such an honor for me. I had been thinking about honoring you guys for such a while, and I wanted the right time. I can't really speak into words what you guys mean, not only to me, but to some members of my council and also to so many members of the community. You guys have been such a staple. Anytime that there is a need, the Latino merchants is there to step up and help. And on the other end of that, it's sad to be sometimes when you guys are in need, the city sometimes falls short. But you guys are still here. You still work. You still put in the same dedication, the same commitment. And I think that everybody up here, as they all said, and I'm thankful to my council colleagues who have spoken on behalf of you guys, you guys just do from your hearts. And I know personally that you guys do from your own pockets. I know that LMA, when they do things, when they contribute to events, that we are not saying we're taking donations for this. The LMA is saying, hey, we're going to contribute. Here's the board members. What can you contribute so we can give to this organization to give? And that is love. That is love. You guys aren't giving in somebody else's name. You guys are giving of yourselves. I could go on and on, and I'm not. I'm going to let you guys speak, but I'm just so honored to be able to sit here today, to be able to give this back, as is so much deserved. So many of you guys have taken the roles on after my father's passing, you guys. And thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the Council President, Mrs. Brisbane, Council Vice President, Mrs. Feliciano, Oina Realwell, and all the council members over here for this award and all the hard work that you guys are doing around the city. I would like to give a special thank to South World Councilwoman Jennifer Figueroa Katner for giving out this recognition, recognizing our work and this important amount of this family heritage. We also like to thank administration and all the directors over here for keeping the night of education open for our need and concerns. Well, thank you for that. Our organization will continue to work with small businesses and entrepreneurs to guide them to succeed in the City of Trenton and create JAX for Trenton Old Trentonians, regardless of what race they are. We would like to dedicate this award for all women in our organization and our wives and our girls, children that sacrificed their family time to be with us and to serve the community. This is the only reason why we can be here and we can be serving our community. We all are working people, and we work for 12 to 14 hours a day, and then we take time to give back to the community. And I thank all my members for that. I also want to thank a few of our partners, like Clara's Heart. We'd be surprised. Right here we have. We also want to thank Trudy Future and Tammy Kow. She is down here. All right. The Latino Merchants Association will continue to work with organizations like Grand Curtis Global Health Institute. Right now, we're partnering with Dr. Kevin Lyons to have big corporations come back and buy from local businesses over here in the City of Trenton. So, this is a project that was already implemented in the City of New York, and we're going to implement it in the City of Trenton. We're going to benefit all the small contractors, small business owners and all that. We're going to link them to the big corporations like Johnson &amp; Johnson, Frontier of the Bank, United of the Bank, all the big corporations, so they can buy locally. They're going out of this pale to the other cities. They can buy what they need out here to succeed in Trenton, because Trenton made the world's taking. We are very humbled to us to receive this award and will continue the work and hope our businesses succeed in the City of Trenton so we can help the community all large. North, south, east, and west of Trenton. Thank you so much for this award.
Understanding that you wish to move to public comment, you wish to omit the agenda items only from public comment, and have this service be public comment for this meeting?
That is correct.
Understood. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. Hey, Tom. Can we have the public comment?
Public comment, supporting. Please.
First person we have for public comment is Sally Lane.
Can I just make one announcement? I know that there's several people that are here to speak on behalf of the animal shelter, and you are waiting for Director Maria Richardson. She has given me permission to let you know that she has COVID. She will not be in attendance. So, we will be putting that off the table until she is better, and then we will address it at that time. Thank you.
Please do understand, to all that vote the comment is, you are limited to five minutes. You may address whatever it is that you wish. Just please do understand that the council is not obliged to respond. Thank you.
And your time is five minutes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sally Lane. I am a resident and homeowner at 928 Bellevue Avenue, the West Ward, quite near the council president. I'm here today representing the Trenton Historical Society. We sent you all a letter individually, I hope, and emailed it as well. The mayor has given us permission to hold our annual fundraiser in City Hall on Saturday, November 18th. That is called Stop the Wrapping Law. With that fundraiser, we raise funds for grants we give throughout the city to homeowners to make repairs and restoration to the exterior of their homes. This past year, this year, this summer, we did $30,000 worth of small grants. They weren't above 2,000 to 17,000 homeowners. We had 28 applications, and a number of them ignored our request to not have aluminum siding, not have plastic windows, not paint concrete. Other things were not in favor of. So, these repairs and restorations are done to the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic homes. The fundraiser this year, because it's going to be in City Hall, the mayor has the authority to give us permission to be here. He does not. You have the authority to open the city council chambers. And I'm here to ask you to consider doing that, because this room is the glory of City Hall. And to an extent that you might find hard to believe, residents and people from nearby do not know this building unless they come here to city council meetings, in which case, that's the only time they get to see this room, and particularly the painting behind it. The artist was Everett Chin. This is a biography of him. He is not a casual artist. He is an important artist. And this is a catalog of a show, an exhibit of his works done in the State Museum in the 80s. This is a very recent catalog of a big show in New York of his works. And our interest, because we are advocates of preservation, is in exposing people both within and without the city to the fabulous buildings we have. And this is, I think, barely could be said to be the greatest artistic asset of the city. And we're delighted and congratulate the city for the Historic Trust Grant, which was announced last week. It's great to have that kind of resource to do the work that needs to be done to keep up both exterior and interior of City Hall. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's my mission to ask you to allow us to bring people into this chamber during a three-hour event on November 18th. I would assume you might want to guard here, and I would assume we would be paying for that. But we would undertake to have somebody from the society here at all times during the event. We do plan, I asked the scholar who did this exhibit, I found her and spoke to her, but she's going to be away, so she can't come. But we will have a speaker to do very brief explanations of the robling and the matted pottery signs of the mural, and the fact that one guy named Willie Clegg is in this mural five times.
Good time. Perfect time. Thank you so much, Sally. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Charles Close. I'd like to say good evening, everybody. I'm here with a little different tone today. You know, I believe we got a great council here that got a lot of compassion in the city, you know, and that's the teamwork.
I'm sorry, you didn't name.
Yeah, Charles Close. One under your banner, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And teamwork makes the dream work. And I believe that each and every one of you, because I know a few up here, and I know you have compassion for the city, but when you get in a new position, it's a lot that you gotta do. And same thing with me. And saying that teamwork makes the dream work is having a collaboration with council and the neighborhood, because council people and mayors come and go, but those neighborhoods stay there forever. They don't go nowhere. They just, either they're going to get greater or they're going to get bad. But I believe with this council right here, I believe that we can work together on other levels. Y'all know I'm Psycho King with the Motorcycle Club. We do a lot for the community as well. You know, I worked 28 years of my life with the City of Trenton, the Water Department and the Housing Authority. I'm chief engineer at the high BDC and the higher place in Brisbane. You know, so I keep moving on. But to get to the point where I want to say, I know me and Mr. Beach been going back and forth with the demo of these properties that's going to be getting awarded to Mr. Carroll Construction. We had a conversation this week. He said, oh, it's going to be going in the resolution. I'm hoping that with your great minds, that you can put it together and get this stuff passed, so my problem could be solved and that part of the neighborhood could be solved, you know, because they are an imminent threat, you know. And we don't need that in our neighborhood. I'm in between two churches. I'm a member at Union Baptist Church in Redford Spencer, okay? The other minister at Annieard. But these two houses, they don't care, because they come there on Sunday. They don't live there. So, I tried to work with them as well. Let's try to just get together. Maybe as a team, we can come with a positive force. But I've been on my own with this, with these two properties. That's in between Reservoir and Calhoun Street, and it's happening. So, I know it's going in the resolution. I hope tonight, I'm just asking you. I'm in a different tone today than I came last time. And I believe that you, that you be civil within yourself, then maybe somebody can help you. Because I'm not angry. I'm just disappointed, not with this council, but the prior one, you know what I mean, to just let things go by that should be addressed, once it's addressed as an imminent threat, you know. One of the properties, 202, bricks are falling. People live right there. We don't, the city don't want an issue like that. One of those bricks fall, one of those kids, you know, I addressed all the last, the pictures of all the properties. These are serious issues. You know, if I had the resources, I'd turn down myself, you know what I mean, because I'm not angry. I'm just disappointed, not with this council, You know what I mean? Because I run back roads, I do plumbing, electric, I'm black steel, blue steel, HVAC, I do it all. You know, that's all, my own aspects is in for our beautiful new council to try to pass this resolution so we can move forward with this, you know what I mean? And that's all I want. Then at least my part of the neighborhood, it'd be one of the parts of the neighborhood that you rehabilitate. You know, because I know it's development areas, but you got taxpayers like me that's a homeowner. I had that house, I bought paid cash for it in 2019. You know, so, you know, that's why it's so important to me. Not only that, it was my grandmother and grandfather's house, it was my mother and father's, it was my oldest sister, and now it's mine. You know, so that's why I got so much compassion in this property. I gotta uphold it for what's behind me and that's my children. So I'm in my point right here and when it go up to resolution, I'm just graciously asking y'all to try to get this thing passed so that you can move forward in our council. Thank you.
Hadiya Williams Mohammed. Marge Cobblewes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come to the mic. Thanks for allowing me to come before you all today. I'm gonna say congratulations to the merchants because I know most of them. I'm, I'm sorry.
Better state your name and I.
My name is Hadiya Williams Mohammed.
Thank you.
I'm here about 48 Bellevue Avenue. Currently, I am living at the new building, Genesis Village, on Brunswick Avenue, apartment 221. I'm here today because quite a few unforeseen events happened to make me lose our family property at 48 Bellevue Avenue. My husband, a 100% disabled veteran, passed away in 2016, December 2nd. The house has been in my family for over 60 years. While my mother was here helping me, you know, we was able to do things then, but once I married my husband, who is the veteran, I was only getting a small amount of money from social security because I was in an accident when I was seven months pregnant back in 1992. And I just want our family property back. It needs everything done to it and we were already working on it. I wanted to redo the kitchen because I remember how it was when my uncle was there, my cousin, when they got it. I hate what they did to the kitchen. Need a new bathroom because I love beautiful bathrooms. I just want the family property back for us to take care of it. And the big problem came in because I thought we were exempt from the taxes. Just like the previous man, I paid cash for my house. The bank said, get a mortgage. I told them I was too poor for that because if you, if I missed a payment, you're gonna come take my house. So then it was just taxes. And with my husband being a 100% disabled veteran, we learned later that we were exempt from the property taxes. I went to Senator Shirley Turner and she wrote a letter to the mayor asking him to consider not taking my property, but it went anyway. So I'm in a bad situation, my family is in a bad situation. We really need a place to live. I can barely afford where I'm living now, but I pay my rent. But it's hard. Right now, I have almost nothing to make it through the end of the month. I buy my medications, I do the best I can for my grandchildren and that's the best I can do. So I feel very blessed because the Lord has blessed me. I've never been hungry, I'm a good faster, but I eat if I'm hungry. I never had to go hungry, none of my children either, but that's only from the blessings. I would like you to consider allowing us to take this, have our property back and respect the fact that I am a surviving widow of a man who lost his life fighting for his country. It just hurts me to think that I can't do the things that I want to do with the house.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. If you would give your information to the gentleman over here, and I'm assuming that you lost your family property due to, is it phenomenon of taxes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you would just give it to the gentleman over here, we appreciate your information. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman President, Vice President, Council members. I'd originally planned to speak about the shelter, but I'll do that at the regular public session. So, so since this is on the docket, I'm very, very concerned about the million dollars from the American Rescue Funds that are going to be voted on for the ballpark. Because when the American Rescue Commission got together, one of their recommendations was four million dollars for the Trenton Animal Shelter. So I'm very concerned, I don't know where that money's being pulled from. I would like you to have the clerk send me information as to where that million dollars ballpark is coming out of and do we still have the four million slated to build a new animal shelter and hire all five people? And that I would like to know. And I will come up to the public comment and speak about the shelter later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Austin Edwards.
All right, this thing live, perfect. Good evening, council members. I pretty much know you all, Austin Edwards. Today I'll speak on behalf of my property on Warren Street, so 119 South Warren Street. As you all know, I am a business owner down there and I also have a few other members of the TDA, which I'm a part of. And I'd say this would mean that if you guys could raise your hands. So it's, yeah, and the main here and the owners of the Skilly. But essentially, I'm speaking specifically, and I'm talking with other TDA members, but I'm speaking specifically on, under number 423-058 regarding the liquor licenses and the entertainment district being created. Specifically, I was hoping that this would be pulled for today, just tabled for today so we at the TDA and other restaurant owners and business owners down there could have a further look and advise you all as to necessary changes. Specifically, I wanted to highlight the issues that's created with this as a current reads regarding first issues regarding dram shop legislation and laws. I lawyer from time to time, right? So just looking through that, I realized that by creating a difference in time of current restaurant owners versus new restaurant owners and liquor license holders, that would create some liability specifically to us, who are business owners down there and potentially those who already have liquor licenses. Additionally, creating separate classes of liquor license holders would create additional problem for those who may already have their license but want to transfer it to somebody else, creating a value issue, right? You know, nobody wants to sell the liquor license at a devalue state and assets currently written, that would create that issue. But most importantly, I wanted to highlight the fact that across the nation, right? Cities are promoting nightlife and entertainment districts, right? You see that in Boston, you see that in San Francisco, Atlanta, New York, Philadelphia, right? And even locally, our Governor Phil Murphy is really trying to revamp nightlife specifically in New Jersey to make it a much more economically diverse and equitable place for all people to be a part of this change that we see past COVID. So again, many reasons I'd like to work with you guys to fix this current ordinance as it's written, to get it up to snuff, to help us Warren Street business owners make the city that much more thriving and possible along with the city. So just table it as it's currently written. Happy birthday to you guys. Looking forward to speaking soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, I have to ask you for one, I have to ask if I may, bringing Ms. Cobblewes back up. She understood by reading the agenda that there will be a second public comment session. We did make an announcement to omit that. She did mention she would be reserving comments for later. Would it be okay with you if she were to make her comments at this time?
That's fine.
Thank you. Ms. Cobblewes.
Madam President, if I may interrupt real quick as well. We will have a public hearing, this 23-058, the ordinance that the gentleman just spoke on. So we will have a public comment on that, specific ordinance. So I'll ask that if there's any other comments on that ordinance that you reserve till that comes up on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council. I misunderstood what your procedures were today. So first of all, I want to congratulate the Latino business merchants. I know most of them are gone, but they're a super organization and thank you for recognizing them. Now we get to the animal shelter. And I'm very, very concerned about all the information I'm reading about expenditures, about the staff, about the volunteers being taken out of the shelter. Volunteers don't get paid. But what we have a problem with is that we don't have a structure for the volunteers that they understand what their responsibilities are. And that's a huge problem, which is why my crime complaint has always been, you have to put out job openings for qualified, certified people who understand animals that work in shelters, that they understand the temperaments of animals. But we don't seem to be doing that. We're gonna give a million dollars to the arena, which is a county facility, and then we're gonna complain about not being able to handle our animals. We have to depend on volunteers rescuing these animals because we have a no kill shelter. And it's just atrocious. And I am asking each and every one of you as a body to step up to the plate and tell the administration, we need to have an advisory group that can be put together that can make recommendations, not only fiscally, but structurally and stat wise for the shelter. We just want to help the animals. I mean, we have adults that are dropping these animals off. They're hurting these, they're abusing animals, they're throwing them out of the houses. And all that they can complain about is, why are we giving so much money to the shelter? Well, I got news for you, that shelter budget is bare bones and it always has been. And I think that now that we have concerned animal lovers on council, I am pleading with you all to get together as a body with the bear and let's get this resolved. Once we resolve the situation, we can move on and we can, we take care of all the other programs. We give hundreds of thousands of dollars to programs for our kids, for our needy, for our homeless, and nobody pays any attention to the animals. And the county should be damn real ashamed of themselves because the county does not produce any funding for any town in this county that has an animal shelter. And we do not have a county facility. So I think it's time to sit down with the county and the other communities and talk about them chipping in to do a regional facility so that we can be other people about this whole situation. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Councilors. Good evening. I see certain faces. My name is Bobby Gaines. I'm a resident of Trenton, I've been here since I was born, that's 60 years ago. I'm here today, getting right to your point. It stems back, some years back, and in terms of trying to find out, my, I was on a resolution back with the past council and I'm just trying to find out, how do I try to get information on how do I get back on the resolution? It stems back from my appointment. I was a past employer for the city of Trenton, the water department, approximately about, maybe like 20 years ago, I did 25, just about 20, 25 years. Like I say, I'm a resident for the last 60 years. My dad did 40 years at his own city, at the water department. Also, I had a brother that passed at the city of Trenton, at the water department. So I'm seizing, if you want to say. But I'm trying to get information online that has to do with my pension. And some years back, it was, I got entangled with some, how the city, with the state kind of tangled me with some other situations that was going on that I had nothing to do with. And it cost me a great deal, it cost me a good deal in my livelihood. I'm a marriage, but that's something else. But anyway, I just want to ask council, or whoever I need to speak to in terms of trying to find out, who do I need to speak to? I called early, early this week, I think it was, I think Tuesday, and trying to find out who pays back to my pension. I'm still fighting, I come from a lone list of fighters, so if they thought I was a go away, that's not gonna happen. I mean, I still would go about 10 to 12 more years with the same issue. I mean, I just have to tie my two shoes up tighter and roll my sleeves up even harder. I would like to try to resolve this the best, you know, the best weekend. And like I say, it's good to see new council with face and blood. And I don't need no pat on the back, I just need to try to resolve this situation. Why, what's going on in terms of why have my pension happened to me? Okay, I was forced to resign for whatever reason. But like I said, I'm not here to be at all into that. I just want to know, can someone kind of direct me into who, who do I need to talk to in terms of my situation? And we can kind of get this resolved. But is, and last but not least, I have the second situation. I'm also a contractor in the city of Trenton and I don't know how to back when I was here or something different, but the public works is a little different, I guess it's a separate entity. I had a situation where it was an emergency with a sewer department and I called, wanted to, what a person that was on call. And he told me, this person was out of, without service. And he said, they're not allowed to come out. So can someone, again, as far as with the, whoever the public work director or sewer order director can kind of, you know, enlighten me in terms of, you know, what happens? If I have a person, it's the same when I was working for the water department. If a person without sewer, you know, I mean, it's definitely an emergency, I mean, it's a utility. And why, why don't they come out? They, you know, I'm not gonna get into the names or whatever, but they were telling me that they just said, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not that important. I don't know what is important when the person can't, you know, stay in the house. But sewer gases is just as important as somebody basement is left out. So please, excuse me. So please, excuse me, whoever I need to, whoever the public work director, sewer director, why, why don't they come out? So thank you, guys, for your time, and good seeing some new faces, and I hope that we can do some things moving forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Can we get someone to address the pension? Who can he reach out to or give some information about who he needs to reach out to? Thank you, sir.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I already spoke a bit this weekend, I'm sure you remember what steps he needs to make.
He did give me the information.
Yep.
Vladimir Castillo.
Hi, I hope everyone's doing well today. It is said across America that...
Excuse us, if you could first start with your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Vladimir Castillo, and I'm a lifetime Trenton resident. It is said across America that when you have gripes with the local policy decisions of city government, to get in contact with your city council. Well, right now, it seems that total displacement of the current local economy seems to be the goal of the current resolution before council. I heard someone, I don't know if he's still here, I don't even know, but what he said is very true. Currently here before, there were several people who hold licenses, such as liquor licenses, and there is something that has to be discussed when it comes to acknowledging the fact that the value of liquor license will certainly change.
Sorry to interrupt real quick. Are you here to talk about the ordinance? Yeah, if we could just hold your comments, we'll have a public hearing on that specific ordinance, and that'll be coming up on the agenda.
Is that 23-058?
Yes.
Okay, so what do I free speak about here then? If it's not that, does it just probably have anything else or anything like that?
Yeah.
All right, well, something else is also that, this is part of another ordinance, so I can't speak on anything that is related to an ordinance.
There's two ordinances that are on public hearing tonight, second reading and public hearing. Those ordinances are 23-057 and 23-058. They will have their own specific public hearing when that comes up on the agenda, but you're free to talk about anything else.
Even if it's part of these documents.
Mr. Castillo, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up at that point of the meeting, and I will say, are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? And that will be your time to speak. Other than that, if you have any comments outside of the agenda of those items, then...
Sure, yeah, I do. Another daunting thing is that currently, I'm pretty lost as to how a UEZ designation works. I, as a lifetime Trenton resident, fully believe that everything should be UEZ. Some of the local contractors or contract areas that are here with me, we have a similar problem, you know? UEZ designation means that you don't get charged sales tax at Home Depot, for example. That's a benefit of that, rules we had. I actually live pretty close to councilwoman Kentburg on Amity Street, and for whatever reason, ten houses down from me, on eight hundred block, Amity Street is a UEZ, and as soon as you cross that borderline, it's not. I don't really have an understanding as to how these designations are brought up, and I'm not going to be speaking about the specific ordinance either, but that's a similar issue, is the arbitrary selection of different initiatives for business owners and for certain people to have businesses in Trenton. And I feel like it's displacing the local economy, and it should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evelyn Medina.
Next.
Melinda Messina.
Messina.
Sorry.
Next.
April James.
Monroe Lamore.
Just left. I'm sorry, Miss Monroe, I'm going to give a letter to Mr. Castillo. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
It feels good tonight because there's a lot of good news coming into you tonight. It's really, really beautiful. My name is Monroe Lamore. I live at 260 North Wall Street, apartment 504. And I see that the Latinos are coming in, they're doing a beautiful, beautiful job. They're hardworking people, and I just see them with the ladders on their trucks, just busy, 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 contributing to this beautiful city. And I see that you folks are doing something beautiful tonight, like the other night, the woman we talked about, before and after getting tickets, and you spoke to the police director, and he took care of it. Then somebody came and told you tonight about an incident where they were having property tax problems, and you addressed that situation, and now somebody with a pension situation, and you're taking care of business with that? You know, all about this smash and grab. It's about people who nobody hears a damn, but you approach a pension guy, and you're making things happen. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Steve Clay.
Good evening, this is Steve Clay from Wolfback Road in Hamilton Township. I want to talk about the animal shelter as well. We obviously all know that there's some problems. Biggest problem, obviously, everybody concentrates on is the overcrowding, short staff, and of course, the issues with the volunteers. Just the other day, somebody challenged me with a question, and it was a challenge. It was, okay, what is your solution? And my answer, when I started to give it, kind of turned off in me a second round of time, listening to that. But the answer is not simple. The shelter does not have one problem. It has many problems, and it wasn't caused by one thing, it was caused by many things, a lot of action and a whole lot of inaction over decades. So the solution can't be any more simple than the problem. It's going to take multiple things. It's going to take actions from a lot of dedicated people for a considerable amount of time. And the problem is, the mayor is not doing any of those things. He's not addressing any of the problems or entertaining any of the solutions. Everybody looks at the overcrowding and assumes there's only one solution, two solutions: kill the animals and/or build a new shelter. But you didn't get overcrowded because you didn't have a new shelter, and you didn't get overcrowded because you simply weren't killing the animals. And killing all those animals tomorrow, oh, won't eat away, your shelter will full up again. Nobody's addressing, where are these animals coming from? Why? They're not running the streets. The issue is the way all the time. They go, there's not dogs running on the street, but you were picking up six to nine hundred dogs a year. They're not running the streets. And when they end up at the shelter, they're not animals that people were caring for and feeding and taking to the vet, and suddenly they just can't care for. These animals are starved, they're abused, they're bleeding, they've been overbred, they've been stabbed and hit by cars. Why is nobody speaking help? Where that, where these animals come from and put an end to it? And it's not a choice, and I've said this before, it's not a choice between help the animals or help the children or help. It's all tied together. We need to start doing this, and as Mark Rosen has said, and as councilmembers agree, there needs to be more than one person. We have a part-time health director. That's not going to work. The Health Department is one of the biggest departments in here, and carries a lot of responsibilities for enforcement, not just animal control, but everything else. But they also have a lot of authority. The health officer has a badge, but she's not involved in anything. Everything involved with things that happen at the animal shelter, she's either excluded or she's at the very least not being included. There is a proposal to build a new shelter. There's no transparency on that whatsoever. I EMO Council, like I said, the architecture firm wired for that, has zero experience with doing animal shelters. They're historical restoration specialists. They went to Hamilton Shelter to look for ideas. The Hamilton Shelter expansion, we're still paying for it because it was such a half-baked job. Money was wasted, safety concerns were introduced. We're still paying to fix a knee-jerk solution to a rather difficult problem. And if Trenton's going to do that, there's four million dollars, you have an opportunity to build something that only could last but has to last. Your existing shelter's been there thirty-four years. You know one needs to last at least this long.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, I have no more names for public comment. If it's your wish, we can move along with the agenda. The document.
Yes, proceed.
Sir. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of June 22, 2023?
I have a motion.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for motions to approve the communications petitions?
I have a motion to approve.
So, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the reports.
I'm sorry, once again, I'm sorry. A motion to approve, what do we?
Reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I have a motion to approve, please.
So, second.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing, we have ordinance 23-057, an ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton Municipal Section 8316 Rules of Council. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you wish to, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
So, second.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kendall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-058, an ordinance amending Section 10-H5H2 of the Municipal Code, alcoholic beverages of the City of Trenton to exempt the entertainment districts within the City of Trenton from certain restrictions of alcohol sales and create restaurant rooms. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Understood. If you'll please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Do you want to turn the mic on, please?
Yeah, you want to.
First of all, please. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ann Labad. I live at 112 West State Street. I also operate a business downtown at 247 East Front Street. And speaking to this ordinance, I would also like to mention my role as a member of the Ward of the Trenton Downtown Association. I'd like to say that successful commercial districts, successful entertainment districts, don't happen by accident. They take a lot of effort, a lot of work, and frankly, the fact that TDA was not consulted on this, business owners, liquor license holder, restaurant holders that I've done, talked to anecdotally, were not consulted on this. I really would ask that this be tabled or just voted down and start again. And to add to that, you know, there are professionals in this field, there are stakeholders that could bring a lot of insight to the table. What this would do would add excess regulation. That's not business friendly. I'm not even sure how you would manage some of what's in this ordinance without putting excess staffing and the like, trying to keep track of how much people are selling food versus liquor and, you know, arbitrarily having some businesses close at eleven. I also think we have to think about the values of our business, the values of real estate here in the city. It's tough enough. This is not as thriving a city as we'd like to be, but when you start to have a second class of a liquor license, these people have to close early, bad enough, we don't have the extended evenings we want because our biggest base of employers leave town. Bad enough that, but it's just, it's tough to be in business here. To add regulations means that somebody that we might attract to open a restaurant here would say, well, if I do it in Trenton, I got all these regulations. If I do it somewhere else, jeez, it's a lot easier. This is not business friendly, it's not well thought out, and we need to recognize that we've got to support businesses, we've got to help support their maintenance of values so when it's time to retire, they can actually sell their business without unnecessary regulations. So this really just needs a lot more examination. It's not ready. And frankly, I'll just add, I honestly think it's a, it's an ordinance that says it's about a restaurant row, but I think it's anti nightclub. I think it's anti-bar. And I haven't been night clubbing in a long time, but I certainly have fond memory of when I was at an age when I did that. And why shouldn't our young people be able to do that? And that's, this is anti nightclub. And do we need to manage nightclubs? Absolutely. But we don't need to rule them out, and that's what this does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labad.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time?
Good evening, my words, man.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Warborn, co-owner of Skillet Cafe, 113 South Morris Street. I also think that the resolution should be tabled at this time. Some of the reasons that some of my partners said as well, but she brought up a great point, Robert.
Labad.
She brought up a great point that it feels like it is anti nightclub, and in my opinion, you know, having multiple nightclubs in the city, not sure if, you know, the City of Trenton is ready for that, but having full-service restaurants, I'm not sure if you guys know the term of a full-service restaurant, just, we have holes, we have waitresses, waiters, you know, that's what the city needs. I think what's happening is that we've gotten a bad taste in our mouth from previous business owners who quite frankly didn't care about their businesses, didn't care about the City of Trenton, so they would allow anything to happen, wouldn't have the proper security, wouldn't have the proper chef, wouldn't engage with the law enforcement. And I can understand why, you know, that bad taste is in the mouth. But to the point, experience, I've been in a restaurant industry for over fifteen years. Experience individuals who want to come into Trenton and open a restaurant or a bar or lounge, they're not going to come if there's eleven o'clock restrictions. I can just guarantee you that. You know, if you don't believe me, try it in the city and the downtown district, the restaurant row, it's going to fail. I'm just getting, I got promoted, I own restaurants, managed restaurants all over the country, and I've never seen a capital city have a nightlife that closes at eleven. So I would just, you know, ask that, and not only that, you know, once this resolution is passed, to allow multiple liquor licenses within, you know, a certain feat of each other, let's look towards the current existing pocketed liquor license, because someone like myself who may have, you know, the resource of the capital to acquire a liquor license, where am I going to find one? And you have, I don't know how many pocketed liquor license or inactive liquor license there are in the city, but I'm sure there's a lot. You know, maybe we can, the requirement to holding a license, maybe the requirement, you know, the cost should go up. You know, if we can open up more liquor license, I'm okay with even paying a tax to hire more officers strictly for downtown. Like, you know, so there are other options, and if we can solve with other business owners and just the entrepreneurs around the city, I think there might be some, you know, some ideas that come about that. So I appreciate your time.
Are there any other members of the public? I think there are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Roland Pike, 113 South Morris Street.
in the bar restaurant business as well. I don't have to start by saying thank you, Council, and commending you for revisiting this question. This is something that as, as downtown owners, we've really wanted to see for a long time, you know, the idea of opening the doors of downtown and having more restaurants, having more revenue. So, you know, we, it's been years since there's been a council that has kind of had this conversation. So I really want to commend all of you, and I'm, I also serve on the Board of TDA, I'm not speaking on behalf of TDA, but I want to thank the council's involvement. Jen Williams serves on the board, and I know that many of you have been very engaged with the downtown association, up to speed with what's going on, and we appreciate that, that engagement and your interest in downtown businesses. So I think it's really great, and I think the council's on the right track with this ordinance. Um, I, I also wanted to question a couple of things within it without saying that this is a bad idea, I think it's a, it's a great idea, again, I commend you for being on the right track. Um, I think that the eleven P M closing time, I guess the issue that I see with it is that, two things. One, I think there's a bit of an equity question there, equity issue, because if, um, everybody's paying the same license fee, all the different license owners are kind of paying the same price, um, to renew their license every year, um, but some have limited hours of operation. I think that it's, it's, there's like a built-in unfairness, and I think, again, it could be kind of a management and administrative headache to kind of figure, okay, this guy's allowed to be open till eleven, this, she's, she has to, she could stay open till two, you know, and, and the police that are charged with enforcing this and others, it's gonna be a headache. So, um, on an equity basis, I'd like to see the licenses of the same class treated kind of equally. The, the other issue I perceive is, you know, again, while it's sort of like the law of the unintended consequences, like you're doing a great job by saying, yeah, let's open a restaurant row downtown, that's awesome. The problem is, we could, we could be victims of our own success if, if we close some people at eleven and let others open till two. But what I, what I mean is, what might happen is, we have a real successful influx of customers who are enjoying the food, enjoying being downtown, enjoying the, the events that are happening downtown, and then we have there's a lot of people down there, but a bunch of places suddenly have to close at eleven. Now you have a crowd, and they're going over to the next place, and the bartenders at that next place are like, oh, well, how many drinks did you have at the last place? I, I don't know if I should serve you, I, I, but I'm busy, I don't have time to check. Now you have a potentially a liability issue where you're, you're putting the, some of the businesses that didn't serve the customers the first two drinks, uh, an issue too. So, um, not that that can't happen with people moving around, but I think you exacerbate the risk by limiting the occupancy essentially at eleven and suddenly forcing, funneling customers into a limited number of occupancy after they may have already been drinking the dinner at places that, that closed at eleven. So those are a couple of issues that I see. Um, again, I think it's a very well-intentioned ordinance. I highly applaud you all for, you know, having this conversation, engaging it, I think it's very much on the right track, and I don't mean to, you know, sound in any way negative as to your, your approach. I just wanted to bring up a couple of concerns, and again, on the basis of equity and on the basis of sort of management and treating liquid, liquor licenses equally, um, and managing the overall influx of customers, you know, I, I think this ordinance could continue with a couple of tweaks and pass successfully in the, in the near future. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion?
Madam President?
Do you need to do a motion before we have, um, council respond?
You'll need a motion in a second for discussion.
Yes, may I have a motion, please?
So, second.
Noted. Discussion.
May I have a discussion, please? Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, I want to thank everyone for coming out and expressing all of your concerns. Uh, they are duly, duly noted. Please know that City Council did not draft this ordinance, though it was very, very encouraged by us. I don't, for those that know me and know my work in the community, this is something I've been advocating for three years for our downtown district, and a few of you definitely know that firsthand. Um, so I appreciate the administration for putting this forward, though it's not perfect. We are working to perfect this, so we appreciate everyone for coming out and expressing your concerns because, yeah, I had a lot of red marks. So I want to just quickly go over, um, just starting from page one. I like restaurant row, but I feel like downtown should be described where we eliminate a lot of people from being able to participate in restaurant row. So I would recommend that we change a restaurant to qualifying businesses. So under, um, I don't want to skip ahead too far, but I just wanted to put that right there to change a restaurant to qualifying liquor licenses that we specify under this ordinance, um, under section two B, the business closes by eleven P M. Um, I don't like that at all. I believe that in order to establish a real entertainment district in our city and in order to establish a better economy, a business economy, and provide nightlife for our youth, our, our home people to, um, who still enjoy lounges and nightclubs, to extend to, to even like a lot of, uh, downtown districts do, like Philadelphia, Baltimore, they're open until two A M. I'm not sure if that's why we found ordinance, so I'm asking our attorneys to get me to look into whether we can extend this to two A M for the sale or for the businesses to be able to open and still sell the alcohol to the closing of their business at the end of the day. And for that to extend beyond restaurants to clubs, bars, lounges, and restaurants pre-existing and to, um, for future businesses as well. I do agree that we do need, um, types of clubs and lounges for our downtown districts who be more inviting for our younger and older generations and outsiders coming into the city because it produces a shopping district as well. So, you know, you have this, and then once they come in town, because there's entertainment here now, then it starts to venture out into shopping and food consumption as well. So I would like for us to, um, add to the exceptions because under that, where it reads liquor stores, bars, clubs, and other entities where the sale of liquor does not meet these exceptions are still limited to one license for every one thousand feet. I would like to go on the record to say that those exceptions should include wine tasting bars, types of establishments, lounges with a limitation of maybe three, three lounges downtown to start off with because it is a very small city, and we will be, you know, overwhelmed if we have a lot in nightclubs because it's a different type of establishment from a lounge, and limiting that to maybe three, just throwing ideas out there that I know a lot of people with, um, to Mr. Woodborne's point, there is, there have been problems at Maxine's where the lack of security and the lack of organization from the owner and the people renting that space did not, I'm sorry, that was taking a lot of time, but they did not organize well, publicly wise, and, um, it, it would be a disservice to our city and to our residents if we were to continue that type of notion. So I would strongly suggest that we add to the exceptions, nightclubs and lounges with limitations on how many we allow downtown. Um, and lastly, I believe there was an issue with to see the sale of alcohol is for dining consumption only. Um, with the wine tasting bar type of establishment, they wouldn't be able to purchase a bottle and take home with them, so I would strongly consider us, um, just modifying that to where for those types of establishments specifically that they would be allowed to do that under the exception. So, and also, lastly, it is last, uh, we need to specify what streets are included in this ordinance. Uh, it just says restaurant row, it does not, it does not say where specifically, um, in our downtown district. It does have entertainment districts on here and create a restaurant row, but it doesn't say exactly where, so I believe that needs to be included as well. So, um, I would, uh, oh, also, I want to speak to Mr. Pike. Anyway, the, when you go from one business to another because of the, the lag of when they're closing, they're not sure when, I want to, um, ask our, our attorneys, um, to, if we can look into whether it would be legal to implement the use of breathalyzer at businesses, maybe securities can be trained on it, so if they physically see someone emigrated before they serve them alcohol again, they have to recheck first to make sure they're below their limit or not at it or above it, and then that would provide an extra safety measure for the business as well, so that they're not over certain people that are bar popping. And those are all of my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Edwards.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams.
So, I'm going to take a little bit of you to raise me with that. Um, so with this, I was most surprised to see this ordinance come up. Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, reason being, it was, well, it wasn't any forewarning about it, and this is an idea that a lot of people talk about, we're very positive about. Um, in asking the genesis of it, uh, the structure, it's difficult to find out exactly how this was put together. The original concept, which as I knew to be had by, um, downtown restaurant owners particularly, was to create a restaurant row. And the purpose of that was to start at the beginning of creating an entertainment district which Trenton has not had in downtown since roughly the fifties, early sixties, mid-sixties. And one of the issues we've got to face with this is, how is this going to develop? Beale Street in Memphis wasn't built overnight, Bourbon Street wasn't built overnight, a lot of places that have successful entertainment districts, St. Petersburg, Florida, it didn't happen overnight. So, we do need to have, uh, more clarity on what the city wants as a vision for this, but also, even with the DRAM laws, and I'd like to ask Mr. Michio to speak about that for this moment. If you could, sir.
Sure. Um, so as everybody, and I, I think I'd prefer to look into this further, um, but I'll give a brief.
Yeah, please, because a lot of folks don't know what that means.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide a memo to the council on, on these issues, but generally speaking, um, the DRAM laws can hold liable, um, liquor establishments for over-serving, over-serving folks that cause other folks accidents. That's the bottom line, that's the summary of what DRAM laws are. Um, so I believe the concern is, as the gentleman expressed, um, what happens if somebody, you know, the bars, one bar closes at eleven and everybody kind of filters over to the bars that are closing at two A M? Um, what results there and what would the liability be for both establishments, really? Um, I don't know the answer to that offhand, that's something if, if it's council's will, and I'm happy to look into further.
Thank you, because they also have to do with serving underage drinkers, minors as part of DRAM laws.
That's right.
So, uh, with that being that we, um, also have the issue of hours downtown, uh, for different places, I'd like to see uniformity on that for everyone, whether it's a new place like a wine bar or it's an established restaurant. So I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Garcia, if he could talk to us about, uh, what current liquor license hours are available to the places or are established, sir?
So, current liquor law, I mean, make sure I understand, you're saying the hours that pertain to liquor license?
Yeah, we only have a few places downtown actually that have liquor licenses.
Right.
So what hours are attached to, um, their liquor license?
I believe all license. I'm sorry, I believe, uh, licensed, licensed liquor license establishments for our ordinances are able to stay, remain open until two A M.
With the exception of liquor stores?
Well, with the exception of liquor stores, these places, places that sell liquor, I'm sorry, that, that serve liquor, I apologize.
So currently, no establishment downtown is required to close at eleven or any other time than two A M. It's up to the owner's option for that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the reason I wanted to make sure that we heard from both of these gentlemen is, um, there's, particularly when it comes to alcohol sales and what happens when in a downtown area, particularly having a work for the intoxicated driving program, um, for the state of New Jersey. Having entertainment districts for one person goes from one bar to another hops across, and people do this across towns, um, it is something that you cannot pre-plan for very well, because it's up to the individual, it's up to, they decide, um, how they're going to control the drinking, whether they're going to take Uber, whether they have a designated driver, et cetera. So, um, while I definitely share the concerns, to make sure we don't have that going on, that's really ultimately going to be up to the bar owner, the liquor store, not with the liquor store, but the establishment owner. And, but the city needs to give direction, and as would be also possibly bringing a plan in to talk about this, uh, what kind of entertainment district we want to have? Are we gonna have drinking bars? Are we gonna have backer places like on Bourbon Street? Are we gonna have music places like on Beale Street? Um, we can have a diversity of not each, all of the above, because at this point, we don't know what we're gonna have until this goes out to market, as Ms. Labatt talked about, and we have, um, restaurant owners, bar owners, and entrepreneurs want to bring a business to downtown Trenton. So I am in support with all these question marks being out there, I'll table them for the moment, because we need a lot more information, we need more information from, um, our municipal government and the planning department, what they are envisioning here, but also, I am dismayed that Trenton Downtown Association wasn't consulted on this, because that was not what was advertised before. So, um, that being said, um, I would like to ask for this to be tabled in a moment, um, but also, I think we need to have a meeting, I would offer to facilitate, help set up a plan, so we can get these questions answered, and I thank the business owners for coming time to raise these questions because, and I'll just close with this, when I originally reached out to Mr. Bridges on the question of the hours, the advice that I received from City Council was that this would not be as a conflict to the degree that Mr. Edwards and his colleagues suggested, so at this point, I'm gonna, um, say that I do believe there's a lot more here that we need to consider. Thank you.
So, there are others, I want to make sure that everybody is heard on that day. Um, Councilwoman Gonzalez, if you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm just gonna be brief because I'm also in support of tabling this and just thanking you all for coming out and bringing this to our attention because most of us here, we are eager to see an entertainment district come to, to Trenton, right? Us young adults, working professionals, we want to have places to go and feel safe in doing so, so, but we definitely want to make sure that it's fair across the board. Um, as far as the time limits, I know for a fact, sometimes when we get out of council really late, it's really hard to go somewhere and have, um, a good meal because some places, they don't serve food past a certain time or things are closed, so definitely, um, in support of tabling this, and I just want to thank you all for coming out to share that information with us.
Thank you. Council, Vice President?
Thank you, Council. Council President? So thank you for everybody for coming and speaking up on, on behalf of downtown area and your thoughts and your beliefs. Certainly for me, it's encouraging to see and hear from people that are coming in, giving us valuable information, right, to help us as we move forward in our deliberations regarding this issue. We all had questions about this, again, as Councilwoman Edwards said, this was not drafted by us, um, it came to us. We came with questions, I came with questions about what this is mean when it comes to liquor licenses, does, you know, how many can the City of Trenton have, how are we distributing them to people, who can have what, when, where, why, how? And now here we are. So I am also in favor of tabling this until we can find some, um, reasonable resolve where it makes sense, where it helps the city, where it helps the businesses, where it helps the people, and where it is a benefit to us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. So as you can see, we are all, we did deliberate while you were talking, Ms. Labatt, and it had, it is actually unanimous, everyone up here is in favor of tabling this because we do want to make sure that it is, um, done equally, equally for all, so that everyone has a fair chance of looking down around this level. Um, as Council Vice President just said, there were, most of us came here with questions about this. Um, so, uh, we are, with that said, I'd like to put a motion to table, uh- Um, so, uh, we are, with that said, I'd like to put a motion to table, uh, ordinance 23-058.
So move second.
That was moved by?
Me, Feliciano.
And that was seconded by? Why, thank you. I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes, and I want to say thank you to Austin Edwards for coming forward as spearheading the charge. Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisberg?
Yes.
Motion carried, tabled. Moving on, Madam President?
Yes, let's continue.
Certainly, as I understand, uh, Resolution 23-424 not needed, move, uh, to second session this time?
That is correct.
Beautiful. Moving on to consent agenda resolutions. Resolutions 23-425, 426, 427, 428, 430, 431, 432, 434, 435, 436, 437, 438, 439, 440, 443, 444, 445, 446, all for consent agenda. Madam President, if you have a motion for motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Y'all be going fast. That's a lot. I just want to make sure we know. Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano? Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisberg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on, the roll call resolutions. Resolution 23-433, resolution authorizing assignment of 161 tax sale certificates for less than the redemptive value of $8,61,273.85 pursuant to NJUSA 54.5-114. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
So move.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisberg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Also, I understand we have a walk-on resolution this evening, Madam President?
That is correct.
And that would be, will be Resolution 23-447. And that is a resolution accepting the bid and awarding contract for Carroll Group Incorporated for the demolition and site clearance of 12 city-owned priority imminently hazardous residential properties for the Department of Housing and you cannot develop in an amount not to exceed $499,370. Work shall be completed in 110 days from notice to proceed. Bid 2023-48, Madam President, want to ask for a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Sorry.
So that was actually motion by reverse, if, with Councilman Harrison and second by Councilwoman. Seconded first.
Okay, so that was motion by Harrison, correct?
Correct.
Second by?
Williams.
Williams, got it, thank you very much. And roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
I'm just really glad to see one night and six pack.
Take that as a yes. Beautiful, Council President.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President?
Ma'am.
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So back when we had our consent agenda items, included in that was 23-428 about the Novella Center. Was that supposed to be consent or was that supposed to be roll call? Because it is in the consent part, was that recorded right in there?
That's roll call.
Consent, what?
It's listed under consent, 23-428, the one for the Novella Center for Entrepreneurship?
Yeah, that absolutely was supposed to be.
That was listed under consent.
428 is supposed to be roll call?
Yes, sir.
My apologies to the council. Um, I'm looking for a vote right now, somebody wants to motion?
May I have a motion?
So move second.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Council President. Councilwoman Williams?
I just want to, uh, just make a quick statement. Uh, I know this issue is particular, because this issue has been quite controversial in some sectors, but, um, in order for our city to succeed, we need to have synergy in this city with our young entrepreneurial class, and we need to build an entrepreneurial class in the city. So I'm very supportive of that, I hope everyone will be. But I hope our citizenry will understand this is done for the better of the city and the future. And we have to have this if we're going to compete with other cities.
Council President?
Councilwoman Vice President?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, having further conversation, um, with the administration about it, a question that I had was, we're, beside the training and everything that was going on, what do we give as far as the brick and mortar to the entrepreneurs? We give them, you know, they get the money and all that good stuff. But what about the brick and mortar for them to open up and be here? Don't just take the money and go ahead and develop the business and then just leave, right? So that Trenton can actually benefit from the whole process. And so they were actually excited and spoke about conversations with buildings and the possibilities of helping and, you know, with the purchase of the storefronts and working it out so that it would be beneficial to the entrepreneurs as well as to the city. And so I do agree that this will be worthwhile, um, and that we should go ahead and move. I'll, I'll be supporting the effort as we move forward for our entrepreneurs in the city.
That's it, we go to roll call, Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Listen. Council President Frisberg?
Yes.
All right. Williams, yes.
Councilwoman Williams, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
I honestly thought this item was on a consent agenda in the first place, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I really did. Uh, okay, in any event, moving on. Ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 23-048, ordinance amending chapter 146 of the code of the city of Trenton in supplementing various redevelopment plans and land development, the land development ordinance to commit cannabis users.
Uh, do we, are we motioning for discussion?
So move.
Second.
I will move.
Now, I'm sorry, I'm asking.
If you can move it in second, if you can address a motion, move forward.
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve?
If you wish to discuss, so we can motion it second.
Yeah, just one, sorry. So just want to do the motion again.
Move by.
I make a motion to approve 23-048. So move.
Second.
And it's only discussion.
So it's been moved and seconded? And to be clear, this is to introduce, to introduce the ordinance. I'm sorry? This is to introduce the ordinance.
Right.
So this is for approval, but if they have discussion, I understand they can. Sorry, right now. Okay, no discussion, you start? Um... I'm confused, I said this is motion approved?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisberg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 23-059, ordinance creating the position of principal male clerk in the Department of Water and Sewer fixing salary range, therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of the same.
I have motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Are there any discussions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisberg?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you have had public comment, if you wish, it's time for civic comment, if anyone has any.
Anyone have civic comments at this time? What that, would want to say no?
Hearing none.
Yes, I actually do. Thank you, ma'am. I'll assume I'm vote first. Bye. Yes, ma'am. You have written in?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yeah, I want to break the law.
I can't, we're...
Um, I just wanted to comment on a few things and have, uh, sometimes want to share with us. Um, so regarding the animal shelter, I know a lot of those left. This council, every single month I've been on council, has discussed the animal shelter. If not, uh, every week that we've had council meetings, the subject has come up. Uh, we have had an anti-breeding ordinance, uh, come up and been passed. We approved the appropriation for the trailers, so finally get the trailers in action to try to help the situation. So, um, I respect everyone's opinion on it. Um, every single person on this council is an animal lover, an animal carer, if that's a phrasey, and wants to make sure we get a new animal shelter, wants to make sure that our animals aren't cared for and aren't, um, living in situations which are detrimental to their health. We're trying to do this as fast as we can, and I'm proud of what our council has done. And I'm going to stand up for our council, be there every week, particularly on this issue. And I just hope, um, we can solve some of these problems coming up. I believe that we will, but I just hope, uh, we can be extended to grace in order to do that, because we've worked very hard on this subject. Um, the other thing I just wanted to touch upon, um, is, this is a good, really nice thing. Uh, we have a new Cub Scout PAC forming in Trenton. It's called PAC 575 and is sponsored by the Salvation Army. And means that the Salvation Army, uh, building across from the train station. They meet on Tuesdays from 5:00 to 6:00 PM and accept boys and girls. Um, and if anybody's interested, please call the Salvation Army at 609-599-9373. And, uh, your address is 575 East Day Street. And the den, head den mother, I guess that's the title of that is, is, uh, Isabella Pochetti. And if you reach the general number from the Salvation Army, they will help, um, get you a call to their people. But it's a new group, um, a lot of the, um, the Cub Scouts in it are Latino, or Latina. So we're really trying to help them get off the ground. Uh, so if anybody, there's someone who would benefit from the Scouts, it could be in any demographic, of course. But we need to get more kids involved in scouting, in my opinion, and I think it does a lot of good for the kids. Um, so please reach out to myself and I'll be sharing this information with my colleagues. So everyone have a great evening, thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Gonzalez? I want to be really, really short, because this is the early night. Um, one, because we didn't have civic comment, uh, last week, oh, we didn't, we were trying to leave. I just want to, one, um, take a moment to say, as far as the animal shelter, um, myself and Councilwoman Edwards have created an animal commissioners board resolution that we're working on. Currently, we were trying to get all the logistics worked out, uh, before presenting it in front of, you know, colleagues. And, um, so just know that that is kind of in the works, hopefully, um, that we can see that comes before us soon. Okay, we put, we did a while ago, actually, we just got a follow-up on it, but, um, just to put that out there, that we are working, um, with the animal. We are concerned about the animal shelter also, and we are trying to do something to help move the process along. So just don't think that we're not doing anything about that. Um, and I just wanted to shout out a couple of people. Um, I want to give a shout out to my church, Change Church, for this past week. Um, we were able to, um, we had over 200 men who completed our Change, uh, Men, Made Men's Program, where it's just a blessing to see so many men, um, become spiritually involved and, and, and grow in a spiritual sense. So I just want to shout out my pastor, Darius Daniels, and my lady, Shiva Daniels, as well. And thank you to all who coordinated the peace walk. I didn't think I said that last week, and I'm going to make sure I said that. And I think that's it for this evening. Thank you all for being present.
Madam Edwards?
Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues regarding the animal shelter. We have definitely been doing our due diligence and working with the administration to address the needs, the severe needs of the animal shelter. And we realize that there is a crisis, but we have been working around, talking to address this issue. So I appreciate your concerns as we, um, continue the iron-hell wrinkles with this, as we move forward to getting a new site for the animals and addressing the overcrowding and everything else. As Councilwoman Gonzalez said, we do have a, a, um, you know, a board in the making. Hopefully, this will come to fruition soon. I'm not sure what's going on with it, but we definitely do need to follow up. Um, I wanted to just also say that for those that are hearing or have heard about the liquor license entertainment district restaurant road downtown, um, I am encouraging for myself and, and Northwood Councilwoman to, and, and of course, another colleague of ours is invited, but for us to at least host a meeting with TDA and the other businesses downtown, so that we can further discuss the amendments of the ordinance. I just wanted to go on record as to say that, um, to suggest that we do that. Um, uh, besides that, I want to shout out the African-American Cultural Collaborative, who is bringing back First Fridays downtown Trenton tomorrow. Um, and the Board of Education has, or there is a Board of Education candidates forum on October 21st at Mercer County Community College, and a James Kearney campus from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. I'm going to encourage you to get involved now that we have this newly, new elected school board. So please educate yourself on the candidates and also the process of the election. And, um, also, there is a trunk or treat on October 3rd, uh, for, um, Trent Police Department. There, no, 30th, I said 30th? October 30th, I'm sorry, slip of the tongue. October 30th, the TDA is hosting their ninth annual trunk or treat at the police department on 225 North Clinton Avenue. And as well, my comments for this evening, thank you all for coming and have a big evening.
Councilwoman, Figueroa Kettner?
Good evening, guys. Um, the animal shelter, I, I was really hoping that we would be able to have the presentation this evening. Um, you know, for reasons beyond our control, we're not able to, and I hope that we will be able to have the presentation. Um, I did reach out, um, to my colleagues to be able to have that conversation so that some things can get answered. I don't want to be the middle person. I have gone to the shelter, I have spoken to, uh, Officer Munoz, I have spoken to Director Richardson, um, I've spoken to some volunteers, and tried to get as much information as possible, um, to try to come up with a solution. And I am hopeful and, and happy that my colleagues are on board with trying to do the right thing for the shelter. As Mr. Clegg, as you, um, mentioned, uh, a larger shelter is not going to solve the problem. You know, the problem is that we do have too many animals going into the shelter, um, too many to handle, um, with no real exit strategy. Um, I was very concerned when I did find out that, that volunteers were banned. However, you know, in speaking to, we get gathering information, um, that's why we need to have this meeting publicly, so everybody can have clarity, because my concern was without the bodies to move these animals out, you know, we're still going to have animals sitting and not being home. So I've had a lot of questions, I have been asking those questions. Um, I know that there was some concern with a poster I posted when I went to the shelter, and there was just a dog that had just come in, very friendly, very large, um, sweet dog, and just wanted to try to help find that dog's home, you know, if, if the dog had gotten lost. And then, of course, there was some backlash with that. Um, we, we are trying to find solutions. Um, I'm happy to know that my probably just starting this commission, that is something that I have had conversations about. And actually, I was getting research and I've received information from other municipalities to try to model a commission after other municipalities. So I'm glad that you guys are doing that, and I would be happy to assist, um, should you guys need, um, some help with that. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we will get the answers that we need about the animal shelter. Again, like, um, Councilwoman Williams said, you know, that was the, the purpose of me, um, wanting this breeding ordinance. Because obviously, that's not going to help overnight, but maybe in the future, that will help some of these animals, um, coming into the shelter. Um, so I will leave you guys with that. I really do hope that we are able to, um, come to an understanding. do hope that we are able to, uh, come to an understanding, um, have a better agreement for our volunteers in our shelter and really just find these animals homes. That's, that's the, the end of the, um, you know, that's what we want in the long run, so. Um, but thank you guys for coming out. Thank you guys for your care for our animals and, and for always showing up. Um, and, you know, I know that comes with a lot of passion, which can sometimes be misinterpreted, but at the end of the day, you know, you guys are in the animal, so thank you so much. And I hope you guys have a wonderful evening and get home safe.
Council President.
Hello. Council Vice President.
So thank you to everybody for coming out tonight and for sticking around. Um, I'll be brief. The animal shelter matters. We need to figure out a solution, um, to get this under control. While every answer may not be the answer that may be desirable for, for everyone in the room, we have to move in the best way to make sure that we are, um, compliant legally, to make sure that we are, um, compassionate, right, as we move towards the animals. I love my dog, Ace. He's a, he's a sixteen pound, uh, Yoripu, I call him, sixteen pounds of terror, but, uh, he's mine. The animals are important and they can't speak for themselves. So, I mean, you know, things were said, ideas were had, changes were made, or things went in another direction possibly. Um, but these are conversations that need to be had. It, it is something that needs to be addressed. And so just know that we do care and we are having conversations, um, and working towards finding the best possible solution that we can to resolve that issue. Um, I want to say that, uh, shout out to Assemblyman Wayne D'Angelo and the various trade unions that went out to Trenton Central High School. Um, we did our second annual trade union assembly. It was last week, and the kids were very engaged at Trenton Central High School. It is something that I started at the high school the prior year, and it's something that we will look to continue to build upon as we move forward, because the truth is, everybody's not going to college, and everybody can't fix a refrigerator or do electrical work. I know that I cannot. And so we are excited about that. Back in July, I had launched the, um, Community Conversations for Traumatic Experiences in Mental Health. We do the screening of the documentary, I've Been Shot, which, um, involves five young adults here in the city of Trenton that unfortunately were involved in, um, in, in gun violence activity. And so, we, I took it upon myself to have the screening in Baptist Theater. People came out, and we had important people in the room, right? And so we started, I started and said, you know, mental health, that's the new big buzzword. Everybody wants to jump on the bandwagon, but Trenton needs good, sustainable, viable solutions where we are helping people to be able to help themselves as well as other people, right? And so we had the screening, I had the police director there, I had the president of the fire union there, the active director of Health and Human Services, as well as other community, um, members that were present that we watched and we talked about what are solutions that can happen. And so from those conversations, it came out like police officers and our first responders, entities, there are people too, right? And who's addressing their mental health when they see traumatic instances or incidents, and then they have to go back to work, and then they have to come back and deal with people, helping the teachers. Who's helping? Who's listening? And why are we not talking about it? And so with that being said, I've partnered now with Commissioner Nina Melko with Assemblyman Anthony Varelli and the City of Trenton Health and Human Services Department, where we are moving the traumatic convers, uh, experiences, the conversations in mental health. And so there'll be flyers up October twenty-first, there'll be one October twenty-eighth, November ninth, December ninth. And we're moving throughout the city to have the conversations with different groups of people to talk about what they want to see, or what do you need so that we can help you to help yourself as we move forward with that. So there will be more to come with that. And then on November the eighteenth, um, I'll be hosting a, um, let's see, I'm sorry, Coffee with the, was it Coffee with the Cop? The Councilwoman Feliciano, Coffee with the Cop at the downtown Starbucks, where I will be honoring the, um, police civilian, um, academy instructors, as well as the crime scene investigators. One thing that we learned in class was, nobody ever thinks about the crime scene investigators and everything that I heard and learned, they are important too. And so, uh, I'll be hosting that from nine to eleven. There will be more to come on that on November eighteenth. So thank you all for coming out. I appreciate seeing you all, and thank you for your active engagement in our community.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Um, first, um, regarding the animal shelter, uh, if Maria and, um, West Bridges, I know they're both homesick, hope they, you know, send prayers that they get well soon. Um, we're all concerned about the animal shelter. This is, uh, everybody in this city loves, or everybody on this dais loves animals, so we definitely need to address that. Um, then again, tonight, thank you to the Latino merchants for all they do. Um, I want to stay here, Claire's Heart, Latino Merchants, Mercer County, uh, Conference of PBA, they're having the Thanksgiving basket giveaway, November twentieth, three-seventy-five Mars Avenue. Uh, donations needed. If you'd like to donate, reach out to Brian Blenke, six oh nine, two-two-two, two-seven-seven-zero, or the Latino merchants, six oh nine, six-four-three, one-three, one-zero. Um, it was great to see all my colleagues at the peace walk. Um, we should all be standing up against any kind of violence in the city. It was great to see that. Uh, again, congratulations, you've got here, Director Semple. Um, it's great to see Director Semple. Um, it's great to see Cory out there in the audience. Cory, thank you for all you do in the community you made. You're exactly, you're blessed and thank you. Um, can't go without saying thank you to the DCA, four point nine million dollars. I'm not easy to be impressed, so thank you. Thank you so much. Tell us from the heart. So everybody have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Okay, so I just want, um, I'm not going to repeat it all, but I did want to acknowledge the peace walk that went really well. Um, shout out to Pastor Tom Bellamy and Pastor Boyer, um, from, uh, Great Mount Sinai and me. Um, also to Latino merchants, they're not here, but I did want to acknowledge them. They're so deserving of their flowers and good work, uh, Figueroa-Kettenberg here, to getting them acknowledged. That's absolutely wonderful. The animal shelter, we all have animals. I know I do, and I was just upset because my dog was in the hospital for eleven hours just the other night. So, um, all of us have compassion when it comes to that. I'm a rules person, so we are working on how you rules implemented, so that there is what is expected of one is expected of all, so that we have respect, that we have decency and in order. I am just a stickler for rules. So we're working on that also to make sure that the rules are implemented in our shelters and that we're doing things in decency and in order, um, so that everybody is treated fairly in it, and also our animals are taken care of. Um, please do vote. We do know that the voting is coming up this November. Um, the school board election is coming up, and it is extremely important. I can't tell you who to vote for, but I'm asking that you to get out and vote. Please don't wait for it to be another election that has only the president and it only. This is an important election. Please get out and vote our assembly. They are on the line and others. Please come out, please sir, please ma'am, come out and vote. Um, I did want to acknowledge, um, Councilman Harrison already acknowledged Claire's Heart is doing our Thanksgiving basket giveaway, and we have partnered with the Latino merchants. Um, he's already given the details on that, so I'm not going to, uh, reiterate that. But what I will highlight is, um, there's a documentary screening and panel discussion called Punch Nine that is being spearheaded by the Honorable, uh, Douglas Palmer, uh, former mayor here in the city of Trenton, and that's going to be on Friday, next Friday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from four to nine P M. And it will be at the State Museum. The reception is going to be at four P M. The movie, um, the movie starts at five-thirty at the New Jersey State Museum, two zero five West State Street, Trenton, New Jersey. It is a free event. Um, please come out for the discussion. This will be very valuable information that you will get, um, from this, uh, documentary that is being, that will be seen. With that, I am done for the evening. I would just like to read the city's mission statement, which is regard, recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank you all and have a great evening. Oh, and I did want to commend, uh, my colleagues. There's something that comes to us that we do not address. And I did, I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Ms. Muhammad. Ms. Muhammad, uh, my heart goes out to you and your family, and I'm prayerful, hoping that we can do something to help you and your family. If we cannot, um, don't think that is because no one up here cares. We absolutely do hear you, and we do care about what is going on in our community. And family land is absolutely, uh, important to us. I always want to say thank you to, um, everyone that is here. Thank you to all of you who came out, to those that are in front of us on the day, as always, our attorneys, our clerk office, our DCA, um, Mr. Ray Ingram over there, always want to give him a great shout out. And yes, Cory and Mr. Perez, always want to thank all of you for coming out and being here. You don't have to be here. And to our colleagues for just doing the work that city council is supposed to do, and we're working together with our mayor to make sure that we move our city forward. Thank you all. And on that, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, Mr. Garcia, you have the floor.
Sorry about that. Madam President, if you give me one moment, I have to confer with the, uh, city attorney. Give me one moment, please. Madam President, it's my understanding that we need to go into executive session for the city attorney. Uh, if you want to ask for a motion, go into executive session.
May I have a motion?
So who?
Second.
All say a.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just note the formal, uh, just won't actually do an anticipated vote coming out.